All right. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in this court with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing for a moment of silence. You may be seated. In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 10 Poland four dash six, adequate notification of this meeting has been provided by advertising in the record and posting notice in the Board of Education Administration Building and filing notice with the city clerk. I hereby call to order the regular public meeting on Wednesday, February twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five, in the Hackensack High School Media Center at?
Six sixteen.
Six sixteen P. M. Miss Sin, can you do a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Amir Hamza?
Here.
Mr. Carroll?
Present.
Ms. Cordelia Alton is absent. Ms. Gilmore?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Ms. Pringle?
Present.
Ms. Harris?
Present.
Mr. Stein?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Perfect. All right. So at this time, we're going to administer the oath of office to our newly appointed board member, Melanie Alston Balaputra. Please come up.
I, Melanie Alston Balaputra.
I, Melanie Alston Balaputra.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Melanie Alston Balaputra.
I, Melanie Alston Balaputra.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of the Board of Education.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a Board of Education.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant to RS nineteen four dash one.
Pursuant to RS nineteen four dash one.
Nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime.
Nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime.
Or offense listed in NJS eighteen eight twelve dash one.
Or offense listed in NJS eighteen eight twelve dash one.
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully?
Impartially?
Impartially.
And justly perform?
And justly perform.
All the duties of that office.
All the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Sworn and subscribed before me.
Sworn and subscribed before me.
This twenty-sixth day of February twenty twenty-five.
This twenty-sixth day of February twenty twenty-five.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Okay, so at this time, we don't have a student special presentations, but no, not the presentation. We have the student report. Yes, our student report. So our student report is from Shanika Thomas.
Good evening. My name is Shanika. My name is Shanika Thomas, and I'll be doing the student report. So for March, here are academic Decathlon results. We are pleased to announce that our academic Decathlon team are regional champions. We qualify. We qualified for the state championship competition on March first and are currently ranked second in the state with the hopes of attending the national competition again in Des Moines, Iowa. In total, we earned eighty-one medals, thirty-three of which were gold. Six of our players were the top scorers in the entire competition. Those students were varsity level, Sinaya Orr, bronze; Hayden Sage, gold; scholastic level, Gabrielle Bennett, bronze; Alyssa Cavallo, silver; Camila Rodriguez, gold; and honors level, Shuti Sangamkar, gold. Our upcoming events are February twenty-sixth, we're having a Black History Month presentation by Aaron Taylor's Black Studies classes during the school day in the auditorium. On March fourth is the National Honor Society induction at six P. M. in the auditorium. Also on March fourth is a Bergen County Unsung Hero Ceremony ceremony at Bergen Community College. On March twentieth, twenty-first, and twenty-second is the Spring Musical, Your Goodman and Charlie Ralph, in the auditorium. And on March twenty-seventh, we have our Teacher Talent Show at six P. M. in the auditorium. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, be it resolved that the Hackensack Board of Education determines it necessary to meet an executive session on Wednesday, February twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five, to discuss legal personnel, student-related matters, HIB reports, negotiations, and other confidential matters, and be it further resolved that these matters will be made public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I have a motion to go to executive session?
A motion.
Motion by Trustee Pringle?
Second.
Second by Trustee Gilmore. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Perfect. Okay, so we will see everyone back around seven thirty. Thank you. All right, so let's have a motion to come back into public session.
So moved.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion by Trustee Stein. Can I have a second?
A second.
Second by Trustee Pringle. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Perfect. So now we are back in public. Be it resolved, we are actually on page two of our agenda, those of you who are following along, at the top where it says approved minutes. Be it resolved that the Hackensack Board of Education approves the regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes of January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five, and the special meeting minutes of February fifth, two thousand twenty-five, and special meeting minutes of February eleventh, two thousand twenty-five. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
A motion.
Make a motion by Trustee Pringle, a second by Trustee Gilmore. Miss Sin, can you do a roll call, please? Yes, approved.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
You skipped me.
Oh, Gina Gilmore.
Gina.
Yeah. All right, that's okay. Yes.
Perfect, thank you. All right, so on to superintendent's report. Dr. Mc?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I hope everyone is well. Let me start off by saying happy Black History Month. We are excited to celebrate all the achievements of Black Americans in this country. Our schools have been putting on some phenomenal presentations highlighting, again, the invaluable contributions and achievements of Black Americans in this country. So I'm excited to see what we have happening tomorrow. We will be having our district-wide Black History Program here at the high school in the auditorium from six P. M. to eight thirty P. M. So we are inviting all of our families to come out. All of our schools are presenting their programs that they've done to highlight and celebrate. So we're asking you to come out and celebrate those. There'll be food and celebration for all that is Black. So we are happy about that. I want to give a special shout out to the high school. Today I was invited to attend the Black Studies Showcase where they presented three times today with the focus around HBCUs. Our scholars performed. They talked about the college life. They provided information about historically Black colleges and universities. They did their research. They talked about the significant impact of those individuals who went to HBCUs in an attempt to make sure that students are thinking about college and more specifically the options that they have specifically with HBCUs. So great job, Mr. Taylor, for facilitating this and allowing me to, a few minutes to speak to our scholars about my journey at Morehouse, one of the HBCUs. Tomorrow, Friday, we are kicking off our My Brother's Keeper and My Sister's Keeper mentoring program. The young men will be here at the high school and the young ladies will be at the middle school. So it's our introductory meeting with them, and again, it's in alignment with Black History Month, but also the idea of social-emotional learning and providing mentorship for our students of color. Another shout out to Mrs. Gilmore. Ms. Gilmore, she who was sharing her story to our classes around the impact of the focus around heart health and very inspiring, inspired our students as well as our staff members. So amazing job. Thank you for coming to share with us your story. Want to highlight our boys and girls basketball team who qualify for the NJSIAA State Tournament that they're actually playing tomorrow evening as well. I think it starts at eight, I believe, as well. So we are wishing them luck so that we make it to the championship. So good luck to the team. I want to highlight Fairmount. They received a grant for our outdoor classroom grant. So we are looking forward to that. So great job to all those individuals who were a part of writing that grant and getting that grant. So great job, Fairmount. Want to talk about a quick safety update at the high school. We know that safety has been a priority for some time. And we, about a couple of months back, we talked about specific initiatives that we put in place to ensure that we are creating the most safe environment for our scholars. And so now we are looking to make sure that we are developing a plan. We have a very big campus, an open campus. And so with the support of the board, we are looking to figure out ways to ensure that there are various means to ensure safety. One being through the metal detectors. We'll be doing random metal detectors. So just want to make sure that we're clear about there'll be random screenings from time to time. Keyword is random. We are transitioning from our previous security support through Allied, and we're looking to bring on some members of the community or members who are affiliated with our scholars with additional monitors being provided to the school, as well as an updated safety plan for our high school specifically. Middle school, I have not forgot about you. I'll talk to the board about that later because they asked about it. So I want to make sure that they are aware. So Dr. Whiting, I heard you. I said it publicly. Okay. Next, we had a meeting with the HPD around the immigration policies and protocols. There are quite a few members. We had our board members, Mr. Mar, Mr. Amir Hamza, I can't speak today. We had our Mr. Ruiz, who was our safety coordinator as well, along with our cabinet members, to discuss what we need to make sure the information is being provided to our families and our staff, but making sure we're clear about the protocols to ensure safety of all of our scholars and our families. And so at this time, I'd like to show a quick presentation from my team. So my team, please come. Each, there was, when I did the presentation last month or the month before, there was a checklist that they asked the school to develop a plan as to how you would address all of those specific items. And so we have done so collectively. Ms. Parchment, Ms. Marks, Mrs. Parchment, Mrs. Marks, and Mrs. Voodoo Howell. So I'll, that's the, that's the second, the other one, please, Chris. Nope. There we go. So we'll start off with Ms. Voodoo Howell.
So good evening, board trustees, Dr. McBride, and fellow community members. The cabinet had the pleasure of putting the immigration and support protocols together. We collaboratively came together, brainstormed, thought this through, and here we are presenting. So the introduction is, we are committed to creating and maintaining safe and inclusive schools for all students. These protocols provide clear guidelines for immigration-related situations, ensuring student and family protection, equitable access, and legal compliance. These protocols establish procedures to ensure student rights and privacy are protected, equitable access to resources is maintained, and legal risks are minimized. Protecting our students is paramount. So some of the protocols for supporting undocumented students, I'm not going to read through all of them because it's a lot and we don't have a lot of time. But Hackensack Public Schools is a safe haven for all students and regardless of citizenship status. Every student has the right to attend school regardless of the immigration status of the child or the child's family members. So the protocols and some of the supporting facts that you see on the screen are some of the things that we came up with. For an example, provide students with tools to cope with immigration-related trauma. Student records should be updated to remove personal identifying data. Offer students flexibility with deadlines and extending school hours for support, and so on and so on. So we identify, also identify barriers to connect the students to resources, assist students in creating individualized plans. So those are just some of the things that we kind of came up with to help protect our students.
Good evening, everyone. So here on this slide, you'll see the physical access permission by our immigration, immigration agents. Right out of the guidelines, school must honor valid judicial warrants and court orders, but should be consulted with legal counsel before responding to any immigration official, including the ICE teams that are out there. If an immigration agent comes to the school grounds, staff administrators must immediately contact the superintendent of schools as the states in the guidelines that were provided. They obtain the information, they obtain the documentations that they have from the legal agent, and they inform the agent that access requires a direction from the administration. Absent of exigent circumstances or judicial warrant, you know, the administrators are not required to grant access. Even in under the urgent circumstance, the administrator should be notified immediately. Schools are not required to provide student information or access without legal concentration. So these are the things that we move on. So the, in regards to the district training, we've been, as you see in these bullet points, I've been visiting all the schools, and we've been reviewing with administrative staff the current district policies, communicating with what the agents in the ICE would be looking for, review with all staffs again. The building access visitor policy, student emergency contact, and school pickup information is up to date. So then the event that something were to happen in the schools, we're able to communicate with our parents. We've met, we've met collaboratively with the superintendent in the city of Hackensack Police Chief and their command staff. We've talked about the departmental policies, the procedures, and the roles of our school resource officers as is agreed in our memorandum of agreement on how they'll support us. Again, with the, the building access training, we, the district had policies in place. Fifty-eight ninety, not to go through all of it, speaks on the ICE agents before this mandate was provided. And as you see there, this is the information from that policy. And again, it goes back to requesting a judicial warrant, the record and request, along with the names, badge ID of the officer. We're fortunate in Hackensack, we have a school resource officers in our SLEO threes. As we spoke to the chief, we're all in agreement that there are our source of information. They will go out, speak with these agencies that they understand, and they will obtain this information that you see highlighted so that we can move swiftly to provide that to the superintendent of schools. Shared resources?
Regarding shared resources, these resources have been shared with our teams across the district, including our SEL counselors and social workers, as well as our building administrators. And as you could see there, just to highlight them, the NJDOE trauma-informed, trauma-sensitive and trauma-informed practices from there through supporting immigrant families and students, and the TLPI initiative, which is Trauma and Learning Policy Initiative. So all these resources are already in the hands of our staff to also share, obviously, with our parents. We can move on.
So we know that multilingual students are one of the most vulnerable populations in our district. At this time, the challenges that come with emigrating to a new country, including facing a new culture, learning environment, and a new language have now been compounded by the new federal immigration policies and the ever-present fear of deportation of loved ones. As a district, we are well poised to support our multilingual students and families during this difficult time. We will sponsor a district-wide Know Your Rights session to provide parents with information about what their constitutional rights are in the event they are questioned by Immigration and Customs Enforcement. Emergency planning in case of detention or deportation of parents. It's important that parents have an action plan if such a thing occurs to them. And establishing a power of attorney for children in case of detention or deportation of parents. In order, and Assistant Superintendent Marks mentioned, in order to address the social-emotional needs of our multilingual learners, we are doing outreach to schools to assess specific needs. At each school, we're providing counselors with training on culturally competent, trauma-informed practices, as has been mentioned, providing teachers with information on creating safe spaces to support our students with coping with uncertainty and anxiety in developmentally appropriate ways.
And moving on to give you a more concrete visual, we have SEL team members at each school. It looks like some?
Formatting from?
Formatting there, superimposes and shifted. However, this has the names at of each SEL team member at each school for direct contact, easily accessible to parents. In addition, I'd like to highlight the CARESOLIS and New Jersey Children's System of Care information. And again, it's to put these other community resources in the hands of our parents.
And this is just information where parents, so that they know who to contact if they have questions about anything concerning their child. Suggestions for families affected by deportation. It's a family preparedness plan, and as you can see, the bulleted items, how they will prepare this plan in case of an emergency. Additional resources for families affected by deportation. You see a lot of links, so legal rights, access to legal support, how to talk to your children about deportation and separation. And then finally, we are all required, all schools are required to have security, school safety and security plans. However, we have taken the initiative to update those plans with an addendum and its information for the schools. All Hackensack Public Schools and Early Childhood ECDC have individual safety plans. And now we have added information in response to the current state of affairs for immigration. And training has been provided to all the office staff who will come in direct contact. And then training will be continued for teachers and other building staff. And it's being conducted by Mr. Ruiz. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And my final bit of information, or before I actually get to the enrollment report, the superintendent's report, is we were asked during our previous board meeting to give clarification around our nurses, how they provide support. And so we want to make sure that we are providing that information as requested.
So, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Paris? Yes. No, no, I didn't know there was another thing.
It's a short one. It's a short one. We promise.
Sure, yes. So to highlight, our nurses are on duty during all lunch periods. When they go to, they only go to lunch after the critical times of the lunch periods are covered. Given that there is a need for them contractually, and we all need to eat, when they go to lunch, we have CPR and AED, EpiPen-trained staff, team members in each building. Our team members are designated to different parts of the building where you will find, when you go through there, when you see an AED. Team members are in that area, and they, they're positioned strategically to be easily accessible. For medical, they respond to medical emergencies, food allergies, and they are part of what we consider our emergency and Code Blue teams. Code Blue is a universally accepted term. That means we respond in a life-threatening situation. Next. Our Code Blue procedures are listed before you. I will not read them to you. Know that the purpose of these procedures is to ensure that we have an immediate response in case of an emergency. Coverage for nurses beyond that, our nurses record their absences like all staff members do. In addition to that, when we know of an anticipated absence, professional development, personal days, et cetera, those absences actually get recorded in addition to our normal absence frontline recording system in a spreadsheet handled by the Office of Special Services. And out of that office, we coordinate to ensure that our district hired substitute nurses can cover those days or those absences. Although we try to have those, those are our primary go-to most of the time, that they may not be available in all cases. And when an absence is entered for the next day, for example, calls are actually made via cell to try to get our district nurses to cover those school nurse needs. At the middle school and at the high school, we may, we are, because we are in a very good position where we have two certificated school nurses, at times we will have an RN who fulfills the substitute role. Thankfully, we have four in-district sub-nurses, and then beyond that, we have nursing services provided by priority and interim nursing services to ensure. to ensure coverage in our buildings at all times. Okay. Awesome, thank you.
And so I'll brief to the last part. Uh, enrollment, we currently have five thousand three hundred twenty-three scholars. Now attendance rate is ninety-three point eighty-nine percent. As it relates to our residency report, we have, uh, five cases that were received in January, twenty-one to date. Two were verified in January, nine to date. There were three in-home visits unverified in January, thirteen to date. A parent-provided updated district proof of residency, there was one in January, seven total. Zero students were withdrawn as a result of a residency, residency investigation and one for the year. Um, for our harassment intimidation bullying report completed between January eighteen, twenty twenty-five through February twenty-one, February twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, we had a total of, there were four that were found. There were nine that were unfounded. There were thirteen total. There are four pending and seven with a preliminary determination of not HIV. And that concludes the superintendent report.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Dr. McBride. All right, so, um, being that we're in our full public portion, I wanted to once again congratulate our newest board member, uh, trustee Melanie Alston Balaputra. Welcome, welcome. Um, you had a whole team with you earlier. I wish they were still here with us, but I know they're here with us in spirit. Uh, I wanted to reiterate again, uh, the Black History Month event that is happening tomorrow, even though our district has been phenomenal in having so many events. Uh, I know that trustees were able to attend. Um, tomorrow definitely is our big highlight for the evening to kind of, yes.
And Jackson is having their showcase tomorrow along with Fairmouths tomorrow as well.
So if you can attend, definitely go.
And park on Fridays.
And just to bring things a little bit closer to home, uh, I just wanted everyone to just take a look around at our dais. Right? What once was the minority is now the majority. And I think that we need to celebrate that and be very proud of having majority women and having, uh, just the majority of what was, what was, what used to be the minority is no longer it. Um, and it just represents our community and it's very nice and I'm very proud to, to be a part of that. Uh, so for the past three weeks, our board trustees, our central office staff, we have been super, super busy. I wanted to just let, uh, the public know, if you weren't aware, we had a meeting in the beginning of February where we, um, interviewed for a board vacancy, um, which is where now we have, um, trustee Alston Balaputra. Uh, we also did an interview, a separate meeting for our new board attorneys. And I also wanted to welcome our new board attorney from Dakota's Fitzpatrick Cole and Giblin, is that correct? Thank you. Um, and our new counsel, Jason Nunamaker, we can just skip ahead. Um, along with committee meetings, which were extremely informative, all trustees and chairs all left with a good wealth of knowledge, um, enough of information where they can make an informed decision. So that, um, so that way we can make a proper decision for tonight. Mandated trainings, now board members also receive man- mandated trainings in these past three weeks. Uh, the New Jersey State law requires new board, new school board members and charter school trustees to attend trainings within ninety days of taking office. The New Jersey School Board Association offers members numerous formats to fulfill this requirement, including live virtual training, self-paced online courses, and in-person training. Um, and those people who have currently attended were, uh, trustee Amer Hamza, trustee Gilmore, and myself. Uh, moving into March, March, the New Jersey School Board is also hosting a women's leadership conference for, uh, for school boards. And I am proud to say that all the women on our board will be attending to that conference. Very excited you will be there, Mark. Get put on a wig.
I need one.
Uh, and so also just to clarify, uh, there have been some word about, uh, city council meetings. So I just wanted to be clear in terms of what has been going on. So the current board trustees, right? We have not been included in the meetings between the city council and the district, okay? Uh, in fact, not until this month, we have been notified of that there are some standing meetings, uh, that have been happening. Um, however, it is still unclear as to when former trustees were meeting with the city council. On February thirteenth, we requested that the city council accommodate our schedules to make sure that the joint board city committee, um, members, which is some of the trustees here, and myself as the president are available to attend this, this meeting. There can't be any discussions on the needs of our district without representation from the Board of Education. Um, and that's what's being requested at the moment. What's being requested is that we are at these meetings. Uh, as a newly reorganized board with new leadership, uh, we still remain committed and working with the city council. So our hope is that they respond to our emails and find a time which we have all communicated our availability and that we can find a day to meet as soon as possible. Okay? And with that being said, I just wanted to throw out the message that has been communicated in various events that I have been to, which is stay focused, okay? Stay focused. In a time where we're being torn to hate each other, in a time where we're being thrown to focus on other things, we need to remain focused on our students, on our district, and why we are here. So just wanted to throw that out there to stay focused. With that being said, we are now going to move into the public comments portion of our meeting. I will be reading policy zero one six seven, which is on public participation in board meetings. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. In order to permit the fair and orderly expression of such comment, the board shall set aside a portion of every board meeting, the length of the portion to be determined by the board, for public comment on any school or district issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the school district. Public participation shall be governed by the following rules. One, our participant must be recognized by the presiding officer and my, and must, I keep getting this word wrong, must, um, preface, preface, what? Is it preface? Preface, I don't know why I keep getting that word wrong. Preface comments by an announcement of his or her name, municipality of residence, and group affiliation, if applicable. Two, each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes duration during the public session. Three, all statements, questions, or inquiries shall be directed to the presiding officer and any questions or inquiries directed by a participant to another board member shall be directed to the presiding officer, who shall determine if such statement, question, or inquiry shall be addressed by the presiding officer on behalf of the board or by the individual board member. Four, all board and/or superintendent responses to questions or inquiries shall be held until the end of public participation. Five, the presiding officer may, A, interrupt, warn, and or terminate a participant's statement, question, or inquiry when it is too lengthy. B, interrupt and or warn a participant when the statement, question, or inquiry is abusive, obscene, or maybe defamatory. C, request any person to leave the meeting when that person does not observe reasonable decorum. D, request that the assistance of law enforcement officers in the removal of a disorderly person when that person prevents or disrupts a meeting with an act that obstructs or interferes with the meeting. E, call for a recess or an adjournment to another time when the lack of public decorum interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting. And F, waive these rules when necessary for the protection of privacy or to maintain an orderly operation of the board. At this time, public comments are now open. When you come to speak, please sign in and state your first and last name, please.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Reverend Carolyn Davis. Um, all I want to say tonight is I am so happy. Um, my heart is filled with joy. I have a lot of hope, um, for what this board is doing, is going to do. Um, you bring a lot of diversity and a lot to look forward to, so I'm proud of all of you. Melanie, I've known since she was this big. And I know she's going to be a great support for the rest of you. Um, I'm gonna repeat what our president just said, stay focused. Don't let minutia get in the way. Stay focused. The important thing is working together, working for the students, working for the faculty, working for this community. And if you stay focused and do that, put God first, you'll be all right.
Thank you for signing in.
Stay focused.
Stay focused.
Anybody else from the public? Okay, anybody online? Nobody online? Anybody else inside? Okay, so at this time, public comments is now closed. We are going to move on to our committee reports. Um, and we will begin with personnel with trustee Amer Hamza.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, before I begin, I would like to make a motion to table item, uh, I number one, um, pending additional information.
That's okay.
Okay, so we have a motion from trustee Amer Hamza to table I, number one, and we have a second from trustee Carol. Um, Missing, do a roll call, roll call, please.
Yes, to table.
Yes.
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 Yes, to table.
Ms. Harris?
Yes, to table.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Okay, so I is stable.
Excellent. Okay, so now moving on to,
Yes, uh, moving on to the rest of the personnel agenda. Um, I would like to offer for your consideration items, uh, A one, A through AA, with the exception of I number one.
Perfect. So we have a motion from trustee Amer Hamza. Can I have a second?
A second.
Second from trustee Pringle, Miss Sanger O'Call.
Ms. Alston Balaputra?
Yes.
Ms. Amer Hamza?
Yes.
Mr. Carol?
Yes.
Ms. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Pringle?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Personal A one to AA passes except for I, which will stay low.
Perfect. So thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to policy trustee Pringle.
Um, policy, I believe this is the second read, right? That was the one for this and then?
Uh, B one is the first read.
Okay. So the first read, B one, uh, be resolved, the Hackensack Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools approves the first reading of the following policy. Um, policy PF five four six zero, high school graduation revised. Uh, P five five one two harassment, intimidation, or bullying revised. Um, B two, be resolved, the Hackensack Board of Education, upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools, approves the second reading of the follows, following policy. Zero one six four, conduct of board meeting. Zero one six seven, public participation in board meetings.
Excellent. Okay, so we have a motion from trustee Pringle. Can I have a second?
A second.
Second by trustee Carol. Um, Missing, do a roll call, please.
Yes, um, Ms. Alston Balaputra, same. Ms. Amer Hamza?
Yes.
Mr. Carol?
Yes.
Mr. Dero Alton?
Absent.
Oh, she's absent, sorry. Ms. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Pringle?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent. Okay, on to curriculum with trustee Pringle.
Okay, so moving on with curriculum, I would like to highlight, uh, C nine. Um, I hereby, hereby approves and ratifies the submission of the Bergen County Resource Development Application for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six uh, to Bergen's Promise to Support Youth who are experiencing emotional, behavioral, and or ADD health needs and their families in the ADD health, oh, sorry, in the amount of sixty-seven thousand six hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Um, Bergen's Promise is the Designated Care Management Organization for Bergen County by the New Jersey Children's of Care. Um, I also would like to h- highlight C ten. Um, hereby approves the submission of the Army Educational Outreach Program Mini Grant for the summer twenty twenty-five in collaboration with the Pickett, Pickette?
Picketten.
Picketteni Arsenal STEM Office to support and encourage local STEM education and outreach and increase awareness at local STEM and AEP. Um, this is targeting our outreach, targeting outreach will ensure students in interest is, I'm sorry, ensure students interested in science, technology, and engineering having access to engaging and relevant educational, uh, experience in. Um, the curriculum is also structured to accommodate all students providing language translation and adaptive learning materials to support an inclusive learning environment. I also, that's my notes. I also wanted to highlight, uh, C eleven. Um, this has to do with the Hackensack, uh, School-Based Mental Health Grant. Um, the School-Based Mental Health Grant aims to help districts expand the pipeline of mental health providers and increase the diversity of high-quality trained providers while addressing, addressing the shortages of mental health professionals in schools. Through this grant, we have entered into partnership with Ramapo and Rutgers for placing social workers interns in our schools and have been able to add three full-time SEL social workers to our staff. This grant has also funded after-school counseling and summer SEL programs. And thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we have a motion from trustee Pringle. Can I have a second?
I'll start.
Okay, second by trustee Stein. Missing, do a roll call, please.
Ms. Alston Balaputra?
Yes.
Ms. Amer Hamza?
Yes.
Mr. Carol?
Yes.
Ms. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Pringle?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent. So now we're moving on. Um, just so that everyone is, uh, aware, we are on page eleven of our agenda on item D, which is finance, okay? So on to finance, which is trustee Stein.
Uh, I'd like to offer D one through D eleven. And I'd like to highlight a few. D ten is the, uh, for the prom of June tenth of two thousand twenty-six to be held at Westmore, Westmount Country Club. It's happened to be the place I had my prom.
We all did.
D eleven, um, D eleven is very important. Um, it has to do with a shared service contract. Uh, we're, for people who are not aware, with the shared service, it's a number of, um, school districts that come together that can use their strength to get better pricing for goods and services. Um, in this case, we're, uh, and we are working with Educational Services Commission of Morris County. So again, I'm offering D1 through D11.
Excellent. So we have a motion from trustee Stein. Can I have a second?
A second.
I'll put trustee Gilmore in there. Trustee Gilmore, uh, Missing, a roll call please.
Yes, um, Ms. Austin Balaputra. I'm saying. Ms. Amer Hamza?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Ms. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Pringle?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Okay, you did say yes, right?
Yes.
For me too.
No, she has.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, uh, we're on page 14, moving to buildings and grounds. Trustee Martin, please.
Yes, um, buildings and grounds, safety. Um, most of mine are pretty much standard. But, um, I would like to, um, just touch on two, like, three items. One, we look to upgrade the, uh, sound system in the boys' gym. Which is well needed. And, um, we also looking to upgrade the, uh, uh, press box. That's all being looked into, so. Um, I think that's not necessarily one good thing about that. Um. Uh, Mr., um, Pablo. Um, he, um, also, uh, we talked about that he's going to, um. Include our coaches and athletic director in that press box so that, um, we could get. True information on what that, uh, press box should look like. Also, um. I would like to, uh, take, um, uh, take an opportunity to, um. Take my hat off to, uh, Pablo and, and the, um, maintenance crew. And the custodians, uh, department. As chair of the, uh, facilities and security from, um, January to now. I have learned a lot about our maintenance and custodian department. After hearing, uh, Mr. Felix Pablo report that. Uh, hearing his report, they has saved the district over close to a half a million dollars from January to now. And I'm, I'm looking for, uh, big things from them. Also, our custodians, I want to thank them for all that they do. They keep our building, uh, clean, they keep the, uh, help keep the snow off the ground when our students report to the building and staff. Keep the parking lot clean, salted, keep the building safe. Uh, there's a lot that goes behind the scene that is not mentioned about these two, uh, departments. And, um, I'm very impressed with them. Um, explicitly, um, uh, Mr. Pablo, uh, keeping his crew together. Uh, job well done, uh, keep up the good work. We all love you, we appreciate you, and, um, we're here for you if anything that you need. Thank you, and, uh, that's it on that.
Alright, thank you. Uh, so that's a motion from trustee Stein. Can I have a second?
A second.
Okay, trustee Pringle. Um, Missing, roll call please.
Yes, Ms. Austin Balaputra?
Yes.
Ms. Amer Hamza?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Ms. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Pringle?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Hey, moving on to community relations, which is trustee Gilmore.
Hi, good evening. Um, I'm happy to report that last night, we had our first, uh, community relations committee meeting and. It was, um, a success. Uh, we had, uh, eight community members, some administration and a ton of amazing ideas that. Um, I think that we could execute on some of them. Being the fact that, um, we, um, have about three months left, I'm going to send out a survey to see what the top two. Um, ideas are that we can plan and successfully execute before the end of the school year. Um, so this is a bunch of people from diverse backgrounds, um, educators, community members, former students that really want. Um, to see Hackensack come together as a community, and I think that we can do great things. Um, so I'm excited and looking forward to it.
Thank you. Thank you. We're all excited that it's back up and running. Thank you. Uh, so other committees, we have none, new business. New business, okay. At this time, this will be our second public comment portion. Individuals may address the board on agenda and school matters of community interest. For one minute. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak? Please state your first and last name.
Carolyn Davis again. Um, I just have a question. Do we still have, um, project graduation? Do we still do project graduation?
Is that, as a little school board, I would.
Okay, I'm just wondering. I, I think it was a great thing years ago, we had project graduation. Um, for my year and Mark and I in the same year, nineteen sixty-six, but, uh, it was a great thing.
Thanks.
Um, but it was a great thing for the seniors. I mean, the parents helped, who helped. Um, we went on, uh, well, my son's class went on. She get right? They went on a cruise. On graduation night, after graduation, they went on a cruise, there's a dance tonight before, it made graduation year just so special. And I know there's a lot, not the funds nowadays for school trips like we used to have. But I liked, I think that's a great idea if we could ever get back to that project graduation. I was just wondering if we're still, because I don't hear anything about it.
So I guess we can look into it, right? Okay, alright, thank you. Is there anybody else in the public? Anybody online?
Yes.
We do? Okay, for one minute.
Oh, hi, can you guys hear me? Hi, can every, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, my name is Christine Katona. Um, I am a parent of two children at Nellie K. Parker, and I am actually a substitute nurse, so I'm going to speak quickly. On the nurse issue and actually grounds issues. Um. It was mentioned before that critical times are covered by nurses. But critical situations don't only happen on scheduled time. And it's completely unsafe not to have those times, uh, covered. An emergency can happen, as everybody knows, at any time. My child personally has been sent back to gym class. Which more injuries happen in gym than during lunch, because the nurse's office door was shut. With a head injury and my other child came home with blood in his ear after being smacked by a child. And never even seen by the nurse because she was not there. Um, there's been kids in my daughter's class that have been sent back to class throwing up during. Um, virus season because no one is there. Seizures aren't scheduled. Um, and I want to know, are these other staff trained? If someone's oxygen drops, do they know how to put on a non-rebreather mask? Do they even know how to turn the oxygen tank on? A and D's are, AEDs are great, but those are not.
Thank you. Anybody else? It's okay. Thank you. Anybody else inside? Okay, so our second public comment portion is closed. Um, I, I do feel we, we do need to address this, um, nurse, um, situation. I know that we had the presentation. Um, but if, if this is an issue that's specifically to Parker School, it seems like. Sure.
So our Code Blue teams are trained to respond to emergencies. For full disclosure, they are not EMTs and in those emergencies, the first call is a nine-one-one call like in any other emergency. I'd like to remind the board, um, some of you were here when we had a student in 2010 who right here went into cardiac arrest. And that child was actually saved, they said, by the Code Blue responders who were located on this floor. And were here and provided immediate response. Even prior to the nurses getting here. So, um, in terms of school coverage. We are very lucky that in our district, we actually have a school certificated nurse in each building. Rather than just available on our campus with RNs who report to a school nurse, which some districts follow. So the blessing of having our school nurses is we do have school nurses available. The majority of the time. We absolutely understand emergencies are not scheduled. However, thankfully, due to our lead nurse and the wonderful district nurses we have. Who are part and parcel of ensuring that an AED trained staff. EpiPen trained staff and Code Blue staff members are all trained. And it is the school nurses' responsibility to ensure, and we have a list. Of staff members per building. As a matter of fact, a shout out to our lead nurse Lamparelli, who actually sends. Us recommendations to ensure that on a rotating basis, when that CPR training expires, when your card expires. We have them trained immediately. So, yes, emergencies are not scheduled and we understand that. The district makes every good faith effort to respond and to ensure that we have trained staff available to respond throughout the school day. Barring the fact that our first response when there's a critical emergency is nine-one-one.
And just to, to, uh, add, just really briefly, given the amazing staff we do have. I'm, I'm very confident that in the event of emergency, if someone is on lunch. They will be more than, I'm, I'm more than likely, believe me, that they will come and support. They won't say that I'm on lunch right now. So, because we have such amazing staff members who are always going above and beyond, um, we are blessed to have that.
Thank you.
Uh, just. I'm listening to our resident. And, um. With to mention about the CPR, the stuff like that, I was the officer that was here. Uh, and paid to save.
Now, I was looking at board members, I'm sorry, you were SRO Officer Martin at the time.
I was also.
Yes.
Part of that birth.
Thank you.
The Code Blue with myself and Wendy Lamparelli, we both put the Code Blue together. For not only this district, but for the state as well. But I think what our resident is asking, she understand the Code Blue part. I think she's speaking more on the first aid, uh, emergency, um, first aid. If, as she mentioned, if a kid gets hit, sprained ankle or whatever. There's no nurse here, how would that student ankle be stabilized? That's her concern. I think that's, if, I'm pretty sure that's what she's referring to. So we have a nurse out. Of course, the, uh, SRO or, or the officer will respond to that. Uh, the Code Blue team can respond, but can they be able to stabilize a sprained ankle? Or, and then, or whatever. So I, I think that's the kinks that she's asking, how are we going to work that part out, what person they say.
So again, if there is a severity of sprain that requires a nine-one-one where the child is in tremendous pain, then that would be called. Otherwise, that child is at that point, um, either held in the nurse's office with coverage available until the nurse returns. Um, our nurses have, well, in terms of other emergencies. They are kept safe, much like EpiPens, but by following EpiPen guidelines, state guidelines, they're in safe spaces that are unlocked to be readily available. Our ice packs are readily available, our, uh, first aid kits are readily available. And again, there are other staff in the building. No, they are not nurses. However, we do everything we can to provide for that holdover. And like Dr. McBride said, thankfully, we have such amazing staff. You were witness here yourself to have people available.
And that's, I think that's what she asking, how the, how.
Yes.
I use the ankle part as an example only, but there's other, uh, uh, incidents that happen, not only in gym, but outside of this settlement. You know, how, how would the staff or someone be able to stabilize that patient until the ambulance get here? And well, thank God, we only are down the street.
Yeah.
You know, but, you know, the ambulance doesn't always respond from the hospital, they want patrol.
The point is well taken, and given the fact that Ms. Katona is actually one of our substitute nurses, I'm going to, uh, request. That our lead nurse meet with all the nurses to ensure we have procedures in place that make that clear and will come back to you. But that will be coming from our lead nurses and nursing team, and I know that Wendy Lamparelli also. Much like when you went around the state and you presented at school boards with the Code Blue. We look to see what other districts are doing. So the ask will be specifically, what are other districts doing? And to ensure that our procedures and our guidelines are clear and. Again, supportive to ensure the safety, um, at maximum levels.
And I hope that answered, uh, your question, uh, the resident, I hope that answered your question, I hope it helped out. You have any other? Let us know.
Yep, thank you, thank you, thank you. Uh, let me see, where was that? Okay, so, uh, we are done with public comments and on to board comments. So we will start with our newly elected trustee, trustee Austin Balaputra.
Um, thank you for welcoming, such a warm welcome. I just hope to serve in a capacity that serves the community and. The children of this community and, um, make sure that I stay in my lane and, 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 and serve in a way that. Um. I, I don't take it lightly, the responsibility of serving in an office that I was not elected by the people. There comes an additional responsibility that, that, that comes with additional responsibility, and I don't take that lightly. So I thank you for the warm welcome.
Alright, trustee Gilmore.
Um, I just want to say, um, thank you to, um, um. Um, Ms. Medina and, um, I forget the other, um, health teacher for inviting me and my son. Um, to their classes for Heart Month to share, um, our story, um, to, to get the children to understand the importance. Of learning, um, CPR, uh, because, you know, the community needs a community full of lifesavers because as. It was mentioned, um, emergencies are not planned. And also, I'm excited again, uh, for the Community Relations Committee. Uh, because I think people are genuinely excited to, to want to bring the community together. And, um, you know, showcase our schools and what Hackensack has to offer. So. I'm really looking forward to the work, uh, we will do. Thank you.
Excellent. Trustee Pringle.
Um, so real quick, I wanted to, before Black History Month end. Um, on Friday, February 7th. Myself and, um, a couple of our board members went to go see the Hackensack High School Dance Team. Um, celebrating Black History Month through the art of dance volume three. And when I tell you amazing, amazing is an understatement, like I don't even have a word to describe. What it is that I saw, what it is that I felt, what it is that I dreamt about after seeing that show. When I tell you amazing, very professional, I'm so proud, so very happy, and thank you, um. The dance team for the invite. It was amazing. I'm looking forward to another one next year. And, um, other than that, that's it for me tonight. Thank you. Have a good night. Get home safe.
Thank you. Trustee Carol.
You got me wrong.
You're not first.
No, I'm gonna be honest, I'm thinking about the, 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 the show, the dance show. I, amazing is the perfect word for it. I would pay money, that should be on Broadway somewhere. It was, it was just so fantastic. It was, um, you could feel the emotion and the passion that was put into these dances and, uh. It just got me, threw me away. It was very uplifting, very uplifting. They, they did a, um, powerful performance. Um. I'd like to welcome. Uh, trustee Austin Balaputra. Alright, and, um, also, Mr. Jason Unimager, welcome to the team. I look forward to working with you guys. Um. The academic Deca, uh, Decathlon team, congratulations. Uh, regional champions, second in the state, eighty-one gold medals, that sounds like a lot to me. Right, that sounds like, uh. I know I wasn't on the team, but it sounds, eighty-one, it sounds like a lot, um. And boys and girls basketball, good luck in their tournaments, um, tomorrow. And, um. Dr. McBride, you and your team, thank you for putting out that information. For the protocols for immigration, that was good, that'd be informative. And, um. That's it, that's it. It's Black History Month. I'd like to pay homage to those who paved the way. Um, through history and who continue to pave the way. through history and who continue to pave the way. And thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Trustee Martin.
Uh, first, I'd like to, uh, welcome our new trustee. Thank you. Thank you for, uh, jumping on board. I'm looking forward to working with you and your expertise is very important to this board that you will bring. And, uh, this gonna, we're gonna have a good year. And, uh, so, we're looking forward to being with you. And to our attorney, we're looking for your guidance, uh, and your expertise and, uh, you want both? All right, all about, everything he could give us.
One of the, uh...
Everything he could give us. And, um, um, I'm sure that, um, you're gonna guide us in the right way and, and be transparent and give us all the information that we need. Ms. Gilmore, also, um, you're amazing, you and your son. I drive me down every day on Route 4 West. And, uh, I get a bunch of horns tooting at me because I have to slow down to watch the fourteen girl boys with your picture. I'm waiting for them simultaneously to come up at the same time. This, every, every day on my way to the gym. So, keep up the good work. And again, like we spoke before, give me any assistance. I'm here for you. Yeah, I'll find the time. Yes. I'm, I'm here. You don't have to worry. And, uh, I guess the, uh, word for the rest of the years.
Stay focused.
And that we will be. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for your service. Thank you for all that you do. It's hard to juggle being a president, being a mom, being a, uh, working, working and all the other things you do. Uh, like you said, look around. We have some amazing people on this board. And, um, to the residents, you're gonna see a lot accomplished. You're gonna be surprised to the, um, employees and to the students. Things is gonna happen and just give us time. There's a lot of work to be done. Again, stay focused. Have a good evening and go home safe.
Thank you. Trustee Amrhamsa.
Um, I really just want to reiterate a lot of the things that have already been said. First and foremost, congratulations, trustee. Uh, really looking forward to working together and doing great things for the district. And it was so wonderful to see your sea of red supporters during the swearing in. It's really wonderful. Um, and I also just really want to thank Dr. McBride and your team, um, for your ongoing commitment to ensuring that we have a safe and inclusive community for our students, for our educators, administrators, for our entire staff, especially at these, during these challenging times. Um, I, I really want to commend everyone that put together the protocol, Assistant Superintendent, uh, Parchment Marks, uh, Ms. Moncloa, Mr. Ruiz, the entire team, um, and the swift response, um, to safety issues as they arise. We know things can come up, but, um, I've been very impressed with, with how quickly, uh, Dr. McBride and all of our administrators across the district have really, you know, jumped into action. Um, and I do want to encourage and remind all of our students that we have those wonderful resources posted right, you know, prominently on the district website. Uh, resources for our immigrant families, our multi-language learners and their families, as well as members of the LGBTQ community. Um, there are wonderful resources there that are available, um, uh, from our partners at Garden State Equality. So, I encourage everyone to take a look at those resources. Um, I do also, you know, there are so many wonderful things to celebrate, um, across the district. And, uh, this month especially, you know, we really are celebrating our diversity as a district. We are celebrating Black history, our Black culture. Um, and I just want to thank all of our staff, our, our administrators and our students for all of their wonderful events and activities. Um, and so, I look forward to the events that are coming up still to come, um, at Fairmount, at Jackson, uh, tomorrow evening here at the high school, um, and for all of the wonderful events that have already happened. Um, and I know that folks are also looking forward to the first, uh, Tricky Tray that will be coming up at Nellie K. Parker on Friday. Um, and, uh, we have a wonderful youth art show, uh, next, next week. Um, we have the National Honor Society induction next week, uh, Bergen County Unsung Heroes. So, lots of good, wonderful things to celebrate. And also, you know, just celebrating the wonderful information from the amazing story, uh, of trustee Gilmore and her son. I mean, that is, is just wonderful that you're able to share that what was such a, a, a potential tragedy and turning that into information for our community. So, thank you for that. And, uh, I also just want to thank the public, um, for their comments. And I hope, uh, and I do want to thank Dr. McBride and his team for, um, trying to address the issues as they come up, um, getting the information so that we can present it to you. Um, if not that night, then, you know, at, at a, a meeting coming up. Um, and I just hope that, um, more folks will come out to our meetings. It's really important to get as many people as possible to come out and provide your input. And all input is welcome, not only from, you know, parents and members of the community, but also from our staff and our administrators, um, our educators. We want to hear all of your feedback. All of your feedback is welcome. We especially love hearing the wonderful things. Um, so please feel free to share those things. Um, and, uh, lastly, uh, congratulations to all of our comments on their amazing achievements and good luck to our comments who are continuing to compete. Um, uh, just wonderful to hear about those gold medals and victories. Um, so, thank you all so very much and have a great night.
Thank you. Uh, Vice President Stein.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank Dr. McBride and his administration. I couldn't believe the anxiety that the community as a whole is going through, our students, our families, never knowing if a knock is gonna come on your door. And I think the fact that we have taken, that you have taken the time to address this, to protect our students, number one, and to give the families basically a direction of what they need to know to be able to follow the laws that are put in place in the state of New Jersey. As trustee Pringle said, um, I too attended the February 7th. The only way I can describe that is to put the energy that the students went through to perform is almost like training for being on an athletic field. They were just amazing. They had me going there too for a while. But, um, I want to thank them. And last but not least, on, I believe it's March 6th, yes, it is, at 6:30, um, is our youth art epic, uh, exhibition at, uh, Johnson Public Library. I have to tell you that a former teacher of mine, so we're looking at, we're looking at time, um, a former teacher of mine and a former superintendent of schools, uh, Mr. Anthony Marselli will be honored that night at the art exhibition. So, uh, again, it's a time to come out and see what our students not only do academically, but what they do in the form of art, uh, whether it be visual, whether it be, uh, performing arts. You will have a cross-section, because I've attended these for many years. You'll have a cross-section of how talented our students are. And with that, I wish you all have a safe trip home. Stay warm because it's gonna get cold. It's only February. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I won't, uh, repeat what everyone said because obviously we all agree. Uh, but I am excited for a few things. I'm excited that the program for My Brother's Keeper and My Sister's Keeper will be starting tomorrow, you said? Oh, Friday. I'm very excited for that to be, being launched. Um, again, Dr. McBride, thank you and the administrative team, central office, for taking the appropriate measures and keeping our schools and our students safe. Um, a lot has happened, um, these past few weeks. Um, but we have been proactive in taking appropriate measures and keeping us all informed of what's going on. So, thank you. I also want to thank all the schools for inviting us to all these wonderful events. Uh, we have been in constant communication and just making sure that at least one representative from the board is able to attend. Uh, you know, unfortunately, depending on personal schedules and depending on our obligation here as a board, we're not always able to attend to everything, but we will try our best. As you can see, there's multiple events happening in one day. Um, for example, tomorrow, some of us will be at the, um, event at the high school. Some might be at the games. Some might be, there's something else going on. I can't recall. Um, but we will try, but we will try our best, um, to make it. And thank you. Always invite us because you never know. We might be able to go. Don't, don't ever think that we don't want to go. We always want to go. Uh, we, also, I forgot to mention, we do have our board retreat on Monday, March 3rd. So, I am very excited for the board to be, um, filled with knowledge, with inspiration, and to continue to move forward with positive things for our district. Um, thank you to, um, Mrs. Marks for clarifying on the nurse information and for us to, um, respond to the parent. I'm excited for the Community Relations Committee for the kickoff yesterday. Um, and last but not least, I also wanted to thank our interim attorney, um, Ms. Hicks. Uh, thank you for stepping in, um, in the last minute, uh, situation. And welcome to our new, um, board attorney, Mr. Jason Unamaker. Um, and that is all I have for tonight. I want to thank everyone for your time. I hope everyone gets home safe. We do, um, we are going to go back into closed session. However, it is, um, no action will be taken at this time. It's just for informational purposes for us, but you guys are all free to leave. So, at this time, I just need a motion to go into close. Motion by trustee Amrhamsa, second by trustee Martin. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed?
Opposed.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and have a good night. All right, can I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion from trustee Stein and a second from trustee Carol. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No. Hey, have a good night, everyone. Thank you. It is ten o'clock on the dot. Thank you. Have a good night.